Okay, right. Good evening, everybody. It's traditional for the town mayor to chair this meeting, and it's usually one of the last tasks of the mayor all year. Unfortunately, councillor Holland, the mayor is not able to join us tonight as she thinks it's a family emergency. So I'll be chairing the meeting as the deputy mayor. For anybody who doesn't know me, I'm Dennis Murphy. Just to repeat what the town clerk has said, just to inform you that we record in the meeting with the intention of posting a link to the meeting on YouTube. And once again, repeat, if you do not wish to be seen, please turn your camera off or click on the button that looks like a camera. That's how that's done. Before we get into the business of the evening, I'd like to just go over the points that have been put before me. The chairs of the various town council committees have formed a panel and will take questions. The chairs are councillor Douglas, who's Chair of Finance and Policy. I don't know if we want to identify. Yes, that's a good idea. That's councillor Douglas, Chair of Finance and Policy. Councillor Wesley, Chair of Communities and Environment. Councillor Furkin, Chair of the Town Hall Assets. Councillor David Brown, Chair of Personnel Committee. Councillor Paul Duffy, Chair of Planning. He's given us apologies, but the vice-chair, councillor Martin, will be answering questions. We also have the chief officer here, and Andrew Thompson, a planning consultant who's been helping us with the neighbourhood plan, is also present. Councillor Margaret Garcia is Chair at the Congleton Green Working Room. So that tonight can run smoothly, everybody will be muted apart from the speaker. That way, we should all be able to hear what has been said without any interruptions. And we will take the five presentations, and then there will be a short question and answer session following each presentation. That will be followed by the submitted questions that you've sent to the town council, and then finally, the open door to additional questions. We aim to finish by 8:30, but if there are still unanswered questions, I'm happy to keep the meeting open until about nine o'clock. Please, during the meeting, respect everybody's right to a view and opinion and let people have their say. If they wish to speak, please do, as the town clerk has said, raise your hand electronically or use the chat facility. I'm sure there won't be anybody being offensive in any way, but we're going to follow the Jackie Weaver style of meeting, and anybody who starts to get a bit abusive will be muted and possibly even removed. I know that the mayor will be disappointed to miss this opportunity to thank everybody for their support over the past two years. You'll be able to read more about this year in the annual reports on the town council website. So without further ado, let's get on with the business of the meeting, starting with the presentations.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Congleton Household Waste Recycling Centre. Three years ago, the previous Cheshire East administration advised that they were spending £50,000 on consultants to look at alternative sites for Congleton. The reason which was not revealed at the time was that the lease of this site expires this September 2021. Despite our best efforts, Cheshire East Council have refused to provide any information about the location of the alternative sites that were recommended by those consultants. £4 million was set aside within Cheshire East Addendum Capital List, and that means that once a business case is made to justify a new site, the funds can be committed for such a project. Next slide, please. Last November, the current Cheshire East administration put forward scenarios whereby we would lose between two and five of our eight recycling sites. And in all four scenarios, Congleton's site would not be replaced when the lease came to an end. Councillor Paul Duffy launched a petition to save our Congleton recycling site, and so far, 3,346 have signed it. And the petition is still open, and you've not signed it. We hope that you will. Cheshire East then held a six-week public consultation with the following results. Fifty-nine per cent of over 10,200 respondents wanted all the current recycling locations retained. Seventy-four per cent would only be willing to travel up to 10 minutes to reach their nearest recycling site. Over 2,500 of the respondents who used the Congleton site, and 88 per cent of them said that they would be highly impacted by the closure. More respondents in the consultation mentioned that the Congleton site should be kept open than they did for any other single site. Of the almost 1,200 respondents expressing a concern about new homes placing greater demand on their local recycling site, 47 per cent of those comments are related to Congleton. Despite the results, Cheshire East Council still proposed that the Congleton recycling site would not be replaced when the lease runs out, and that should be September 21, on the grounds that they said it was too expensive to replace. However, we think they have overestimated the cost to replace such a site. The other seven sites are to remain open for now. However, Cheshire East Council have warned that some sites may close of that seven if the negotiations for the new waste contract, starting in March 2023, do not go well. So what are the consequences of us losing our site in Congleton? Well, Cheshire East Council admit that the CO2 emissions would increase by about 159 tonnes per year. But in their consultation, they have been using flawed figures. And therefore, with that, and also the fact that they ignored the consequences of longer queues creating more engine idling, the adverse CO2 emissions will probably be quite a lot higher than that. Around 4% Cheshire East admit of Congleton's total fruitroot, which is about 111 tonnes, will be lost each year. Much of that will be waste going into domestic waste bins rather than travel to a recycling site. That is further away than what we have now. And that, of course, is proven by the fact that 74% of people said they would not travel more than 10 minutes. The increased risk of fly tipping. The issue of the elderly, the disabled, and those allowed to car who rely on others to take stuff to a nearby site, they are particularly going to suffer the consequences. By closing Congleton's site, Cheshire East Council admit that the number of homes served by Macclesfield Site would increase by over 15,000. That's an increase of 63%, and there's a real doubt whether Macclesfield Site can cope, creating a dangerous junction where people are making dangerous manoeuvres to overtake long queues. And just a mile away from that site, Cheshire East are planning to spend £5 million to improve the safety of another junction. And next slide. On March 15, the Cheshire East proposals were considered at length by the Environment and Regeneration Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Eight of the Congleton Town councillors spoke, and they represented every single political group that sits on Congleton Town Council. And we were all united in the need, the essential need, for us to have a waste recycling site in Congleton. The Overview and Scrutiny Committee listened to what we had to say, and they agreed. And they recommended that firstly, a task and finish group would be set up to look at all the available alternative options, and that would report back within six months. Furthermore, during the considerations of the task and finish group, the option for a permanent recycling site for Congleton is not to be taken off the table. We therefore waited with great interest for the forthcoming Cheshire East Cabinet meeting on the 13th of April to see whether they would follow the guidance from the Overview and Scrutiny Committee. They have already provided the papers for that report of 140 pages. And we thought it was very important to make you see every single word that Cheshire East Cabinet have about the Overview and Scrutiny Committee and its recommendations with all these 140 pages. And next slide, please. They didn't mention the Overview and Scrutiny Committee at all, and they did not mention its recommendations, which is very, very disappointing. And in my opinion, it makes a complete mockery of local democracy. Next slide, please. So what is the Cheshire East Cabinet going to recommend on the 13th of April? Firstly, that the current site of Congleton is not to be replaced when it closes in September 2021. Whilst Cheshire East Council negotiate the new household waste recycling contract that is due to start in March 2023, they did leave a crumb of comfort in that the £4 million that's sitting in the Addendum Capital Project for a replacement site for Congleton is to be retained, so that if we can make a good business case, then we could get those funds to be committed. Next slide. So if Cabinet on the 13th of April decide to follow their recommendations in the papers, but of course, I reassure you that many Congleton Town Councils will be speaking at that Cabinet meeting on the 13th of April to urge that they adopt the resolutions recommended by the Overview and Scrutiny Committee, where do we stand? Well, firstly, we are not allowed under council rules to revisit this issue for six months at Cheshire East Council meetings. But this May, Cheshire East Council changes to a new committee system, which is a better system, it's more transparent, and more democratic. At the current time, I believe we have 39 of the 82 Cheshire East councillors supporting the recommendations of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee to set up a task and finish group. So in October 2021, we will try again under the new committee system, where we have a better chance. So while we may lose round one next week at the Cabinet meeting, I am hopeful that we'll be more successful in round two in six months' time. The next slide, please. So we thought we'd do a quick poll, and the poll is based on exactly how Cheshire East asked the question in their public consultation. And that is, what will the impact be of you personally losing your household waste and recycling sites in Congleton? And you have four choices. A very high impact, a fairly impact, a fairly low impact, or a very low impact. So is that the final result? It's fairly similar to what we saw in the actual result, which was 67% very high, 21% fairly high, so that's a total of 88, and here we have 96. And the fairly low was 4%, and the very low was 3%. So that's actually stronger than what we saw in the consultation. Okay, thank you very much for that. And then the next slide. Well, we're now able to take questions for anyone who wishes to ask any questions just specifically about the household waste and recycling site.
David, next slide.
I see that Maurice Walker would like to ask a question, unless the officers are aware of somebody else first.
So I didn't realise I was on mute. Yes, only Maurice has put his hand up so far.
Okay, so would Maurice like to ask a question?
We can't hear Maurice. Have you unmuted yourself, Maurice?
Muted at the moment.
Fast unmute, I can't... Or you can type your question in the chat, Maurice, if you like.
I have another question, which I'll answer, which I'm very happy to answer, about Cheshire East Council. Were they entitled not to withhold the consultant's report? Shortly after Cheshire East Council in November announced the plans about the Household Waste Recycling Review, I sent a Freedom of Information request in to ask for details of the alternative recycling sites. Cheshire East Council refused to give that information on the grounds of commercial sensitivity. So I took that on board, and I appealed. And in my appeal, I reduced the information requested to just bland information of the approximate acreage and the approximate distance from Congleton of the alternative recycling sites. To my surprise, Cheshire East Council refused to even answer that. Then on Facebook, councillor Corcoran, the leader of Cheshire East Council, said, was praising Cheshire East about how transparent they are. So I then jumped in and said, well, if you're so transparent, would you please answer my FOI bland information? And he refused, but he did admit that there was more than one other site that they are looking at. So I've now been obliged to appeal to the Information Commissioner. And the Information Commissioner has come back to me and said that my appeal is worthy of their consideration. But unfortunately, owing to government cutbacks, they will take six months to look at my case. So we will not get the results of our appeal until August, September. But that's not quite as bad as you might think, because if Cabinet make the decision not to replace the site, we can't go back to Cheshire East until October.
Okay, and the question that we have from Maurice Walker is, can you forecast the life of the Macclesfield Site? And is it right that the Congleton site will be closed before the issue can be raised again?
Well, the problem is that at the February 1st, I didn't have time to tell you everything, but at the first Overview and Scrutiny Committee meeting, the Overview and Scrutiny Committee told Cheshire East Council to go back and try and renegotiate to extend the lease beyond September, and also to try and buy the site. But the landlord seems to be very minded, and maybe he's been offered a very good deal, that he will not talk to Cheshire East Council, and he is determined to sell the site to Costa Coffee. So there is no option but that the site will end. A suggestion was put forward about Cheshire East trying to do a month-by-month rolling term to keep it going as long as possible. But I think unfortunately, the matter's out of our hands. And of course, what makes it worse is it takes time to build a new recycling site. So we have had plenty of time to have found a new site, by Cheshire East to have found a new site, in time, so we shouldn't really be in this situation. And the other thing which we don't know is that Cheshire East Council admit that they're going to have to spend very substantial sums, and they haven't said what they are, but they are very substantial, in order for Macclesfield Site to be able to cope with some of the extra increased volume.
Okay, and then we've got Richard with his hand up. Yeah, I think you're unmuted.
I think I've done it now. Not sure if you can hear me. I mean, it was just a quick one to say, you know, thank you for all the efforts that the councillors are going to to protect our site. And is there anything, as residents, that we can do to kind of apply a bit more pressure? I mean, I've tried myself, and the council leader seems to be very upset when I question his hypocrisy with trying to protect the environment and then closing a recycling facility. But is there anything, you know, as residents, we could approach a landowner and try and purchase it from him? You know, is that a viable option?
Well, I think the landlord's already wrapped up the deal with Costa Coffee. I think all you can do is just keep writing to Cheshire East councillors. I mean, one of the interesting things is that Labour on Cheshire East Council only have 24 councillors, and eight of them are in Macclesfield. And if the situation deteriorates after we don't have a site in Congleton, that they start getting very long queues in Macclesfield, that might get a third of the Labour councillors a bit jumpy. So it may be worth just writing to Macclesfield councillors, you know, and just keeping the pressure on. And because we are allowed to keep going back every six months, and as we get nearer to 2023, we may find that the governing coalition, and to be fair, one of the independents, who's a member of that governing coalition, he actually agreed that a task and finish group should be formed. And while I say we know of 39, we know obviously with the two Congleton independent ward councillors, that we don't know how many of the others who haven't been asked the question, how many of them actually agree a task and finish group? And I had actually asked a Cheshire East councillor, and we did it on my behalf, to ask the legal officer of Cheshire East that if Cabinet next week vote to not replace the site, whether full council the following week could take a vote for them to adopt the proposals of the task and finish group, recommendation by the Overview and Scrutiny Committee. And unfortunately, the legal officer of Cheshire East Council says that full council has no right to override the Cabinet, which again, to me, makes Cabinet government for councils an absolute complete mockery, because it doesn't represent the views of the residents.
Okay, just one final question from Richard Moore.
Yeah, Richard's asking if I can read that one out. So it just says, surely with the addition of our new link road, there must be some ideal sites along its length. So has Congleton Town Council identified any suitable locations along its way to put forward to Cheshire East Council?
Well, the reason we hadn't done much on that ground is because we know that £50,000 was spent on consultants who've identified some sites. So if they've identified good sites, we need to know what they are, because, you know, the job's already been done. Because, so that is where we are at the moment. The other thing is, just finally, is that Cheshire East Council estimated that the cost for a new site is £4 million. They've admitted to one of our ward councillors that they hadn't done any work on it, they'd inherited that figure. We've had one diligent resident who worked out that Norfolk Council are able to build a site for 1.9 million, and Nottingham Council are able to build one for 2.5 million. So there's a plenty of flawed information which we can work on over the next six months if Cabinet make the wrong decision next week.
Okay. Councillor Douglas, thank you for your questions. We'll move on now. Okay, Andrew Thompson will be speaking about Congleton neighbourhood plan. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, David. Good evening, everybody. I'm Andrew Thompson. I'm working with the council on the neighbourhood plan. I'm a planning consultant. And basically, I've just been asked to update everybody about what's happening with the neighbourhood plan. The bullet points on the screen at the moment are those raised by the local community and stakeholders, and can be summarised as follows. Stimulating local employment is about supporting existing businesses and providing opportunities for new employment, opportunities within the town. It also involves working with local schools and businesses to improve the skills base in the town. Providing for the ageing population is to encourage the provision of a variety of accommodation in the town to meet the needs of the current and future population, including healthcare and leisure facilities. Cheshire East has got, like most areas in the country, an ageing population. And currently, there's a feeling that they're not being catered for in terms of the development that may be coming forward. Traffic, in particular sustainable travel, that's about walking and cycling and encouraging that across the town and through the town, but also improving the air quality in specific areas of town where there is monitoring taking place at the moment. The town centre, regenerate the town centre by making it attractive and welcoming with broad retail, leisure, and business offer. Now, this may be affected by recent changes in planning legislation announced this week, where the government have now said that under permitted development rights, shops, offices, restaurants, etc., can be changed subject to certain criteria to housing without the need necessarily to go through the planning process. And that is coming into force on the 21st of April, but it's unlikely any changes physically will take place until August this year. It's also in the town centre is creating a place where people wish to visit, work, live, and shop, and experience the local heritage as well, and to develop the role of Congleton as a key service centre within Cheshire East. Housing, make sure that the new housing development is sustainable and meets the needs of existing and future residents, and ensure that the new housing is of a high quality and provides buildings, spaces, streets that reflect the current character and nature of Congleton. Protecting and enhancing the environment. Congleton is a special place. I don't live there, but I've worked, obviously, in the town for a long time now. It's got a variety of green spaces, river and canal corridors, as well as access to the surrounding countryside. The existing green infrastructure is important, linking bits of the town and enabling people to move through the town. So it's important that that is safeguarded, but also those links are reinforced and created. And new development should be encouraged to incorporate renewable energy and technology. And finally, health, education, and wellbeing. Ensure the town has health and leisure facilities that are suitable, available, affordable, and accessible for everyone in the community. Encourage state-of-the-art education facilities for all sections of the community that are able to support the expanding population of the town and surrounding area. Now, all those points have been raised by the community, and they're being taken on board in the policies, in the plan. They also fit with the town council's business plan that was published last year. And we've incorporated the aims and objectives of that business plan also into the neighbourhood plan that will be published, hopefully, in June. I'll tell you a little bit about that. But the issue with Congleton, and it caused complications at the examination that we had about 18 months ago, was that the plan is restricted to the parish boundary. And of course, the majority of growth is taking place to the north of the town, a lot of it within adjoining parishes, which creates some difficulties and requires some clarification in terms of housing numbers and journeys and links and so on. So that wasn't clear in the first draft of the plan, and hopefully, we've resolved that. Next slide, please. Well, the first draft, as I've just said, got as far as the examination, which is part of the process in the neighbourhood plan process. The examiner raised a number of questions and issues regarding the evidence base, in particular, the housing numbers and the way we were dealing with the green open space and the policies associated with that. So we addressed those issues. We've got more evidence to support our policies, and we've amended the policies to take on board the comments that were made at that stage. We've also taken on board changes to national planning policy, which took place at the end of 2019, early 2020, recent government announcements about changes to planning policy, and also the proposed policies in the Cheshire East Sites Allocation Development Plan document, which is in fact part two of the local plan, which has been published. There's been consultation on that, and we need to take that on board in respect of our policies and our plan, because we have to reflect those policies at the local level as well as at the national planning policy level. Next slide, please. So the revised timetable. We're hoping to be able to publish the draft neighbourhood plan for consultation in June. It's virtually finished. There's just some fine tuning to make. And following the announcement this week about the changes in planning policy, I just need to look at three policies to make sure that we're complying with that new national policy. It then is, once we've had the consultation, we've had responses back from the community, we amend the plan to accord with what's been said to us. We then submit that plan to Cheshire East, hopefully in September. They then go out for a six-week consultation, and they then look at the responsive days they've received, look at whether they need to amend the plan, consult with us if they're going to amend it, and then publish the plan for examination. Now, that's when... And then publish the plan for examination. Now, that's when the external examiner appointed by the planning inspector comes along. And he will either take the plan away and look at it and what's called written representations, make comments, suggestions. And write back to us, or like last time, he may hold an examination where we'll be uh in front of him for a day, answering his questions and. And responding to the points he raised. And then hopefully, uh, all things being equal, Cheshire East will hold a referendum in January of next year. And the plan will be made and we'll then have a development plan for Congleton, which is a very important step in the planning process, particularly. Uh, bear in mind all the changes that are occurring in planning and the pressure that will come forward, no doubt, for more development across the whole of Cheshire East. Going forward into the future. Thank you, I'm happy to take any questions on those points.
Okay, um, there's no, there's nothing in the chat at the moment and. Can't see any hands up, so I think you've got away with it, Andrew.
Oh, there's a hand up, look.
Oh, yes, there is, sorry. Um, there's Olga wants to ask a question.
I wanted to ask the question, what was the reason for such delay between last stage of consultation, two thousand and eighteen? And we are now coming back only now to thousand twenty one. So there was nothing happening at that time, so what was the reason for that?
The the reason Olga was that, one, we had the examination, so we had to then revisit uh the questions that were raised by the examiner. We've also undertaken further evidence to support uh the policies that we're putting forward and commissioned further work to support those policies. To answer the questions raised by the examiner, but also to respond to changes in legislation as well. So it has taken a little bit of time, I'll hold my hand up to that, but we have worked very hard and we've gathered an awful lot more evidence. To support the policies we're putting forward and the arguments in the plan.
Also, I suggest, I think that maybe is it connected that the government keeps on changing its policies on and on and on? Is it correct?
Very much so, yes. Um, they have changed policies and and as 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 late as last week, they changed policies, which have affected. Three of the proposed policies in the plan, which I now need to revisit and redraft to accord with the latest government policy. Because of course, when we're tested as a neighbourhood plan, we have to make sure that we do accord with both national and local planning policy. We also have to accord, as I said earlier, with the Cheshire East second part of their uh local plan called the S A B P D. And we we have to wait for that to be published to make sure that. One, we weren't overlapping or indeed contradicting anything that was in there as well. So again, there's a little bit of a delay, waiting for that, those policies to come forward out of Cheshire East.
So Covid was not in the way of your plan?
Covid has caused problems because of course with the plan, uh, you have to consult with people. And people want to see copies of the plan and and often they want to. Sit in front of me or other people from the town council, ask questions about the plan. And of course, we've been able to do that, but there is now government guidance um that's been published at the end of last year. Uh, which. Tells us how to deal with the statutory process under the Covid regulations, but that didn't come out until I think September of last year. So the 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 advice was very late coming out, so we we again can take that on board now and deal with it and comply with it. Because we didn't have any advice to comply with before you said.
So the uh your timetable shows us that there's no way we could we could do it faster than January, no?
We we could do it a lot faster if we hadn't didn't have to go through the statutory process again, because we have. We have to publish the plan in its draft form for six weeks. Uh, and then we have to look at those comments, write a report on what how we're going to respond to them, put that all together. Put the plan together and there are three documents that have to be submitted to Cheshire East. One is the plan itself. Two is the statement of consultation. And three is the statement of basic conditions. The statement of consultation summarizes what we've done, who said what and why and how we've changed it. The plan itself is obvious, it's policies and justification. The statement of basic conditions is a technical legal document which I write for the town council. Which calls the planning inspectorate, how we have accord in how our plan is in accord with local, national and other policies. And I have to answer every, against every one of our policies, I have to say. Why it's sustainable, how it meets the sustainable criteria, how it meets national planning policy criteria. And also how it meets local plan criteria. And I have to answer three points on every policy that we include in our plan.
So uh we wouldn't lose any of the green corridors while it's still being consulted. Is it correct?
Yes.
So we are, for the time being, nobody, nobody can infringe on the green spaces.
Well, let's let's say, let's say they can apply to infringe on the green spaces. Um, but we would then refer them, that's why we want to get it out as quickly as possible to the draft policies in the plan. But also the policies in the Sites Allocation Development Plan document from Cheshire East do cover the protection of green spaces as well. But generically across Cheshire East rather than specifically in Congleton.
Okay.
For reply, thank you.
Thank you.
Two other people for questions, the first one is um Peter Henry Hughes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm not sure whether this question should be directed to Andrew Thompson or to Robert Douglas, but possibly both. Because it seems to me that given the uh fact that there's a coincidence in. The recycling reaching, coming to a head and the neighbourhood plan coming to a head. And there's ob- an obvious connection between the two in terms of things like traffic noise, to name but one. Uh, traffic pollution, I should say. Uh, do you have any comments about this?
Uh, shall I answer it first and then um uh Council Douglas wants to come back, he can do so. Uh, waste recycling is dealt with under a separate kind of policy area within Cheshire East and the neighbourhood plan. Whilst it can comment on traffic and traffic generation and so on and so forth, can't comment on waste recycling, unfortunately. It's one of the areas that neighbourhood planning policy is not allowed to comment on. I wish we could, uh, because you know, there are lots of issues relating to waste recycling. But neighbourhood planning and the remit of neighbourhood plans cannot make policies that are covered by the waste recycling area of Cheshire East. It's just a fact of life, unfortunately.
Yeah, I I would just add that Cheshire East Council, they have their cabinet members and officers sitting in front of a nice green placard. Saying that Cheshire East Council is working with communities to reduce carbon. So how that fits in with the decision to increase the CO two emissions on even their flawed figures by a hundred and fifty nine tonnes. Um, and also in the, they do it a detailed environmental impact. And on one page, it says that the uh impact on air quality for the population and on human health. Is neutral to minor beneficial and one of the uh overview and scrutiny committee members did raise that this is complete nonsense. And they've now put a sentence in the uh cabinet papers to justify this on the grounds that they will reduce. CO two emissions around the Congleton site by eight tonnes a year. Because they won't have to have two vehicles each day moving full skips, but the end of the day, there's a hundred and seventy sixty seven tonnes on their figures going the completely opposite way. But the, there's a lot of flawed information uh in in their figures.
And we've got a final question from Richard.
I'm muting myself. Um, yeah, thank you. Um, uh, thank you for going all through that. It's just a question, maybe not an absolute. Don't actually know the answer, but is there any places left within the Congleton parish itself that can be developed on? Or is this about regeneration of older areas?
Primarily, Richard, it's about regeneration, uh, and there's a lot of policies in the plan that uh cover regeneration. And you're quite right, within the Congleton parish, uh, it's fairly packed in as far as development opportunities are concerned. But there is of course the point Olga raised about the open spaces and the green spaces, which are always under threat. And we have to um put some, well, we have put some very strong policies together now with additional evidence. To protect those green spaces and the green corridors and indeed what's called blue corridors, the river corridors. Because we feel that they're uh very important uh for Congleton, for the population of Congleton. And also for the opportunities to move around and through Congleton and links into the surrounding countryside. So we focused a lot on that within the neighbourhood plan. Uh, because we feel that there probably will be pressure coming forward. Um, from developers who are always looking at opportunities. Um. Usually on green field because they're easiest to develop and they make the most money out of green field development. And we've tried to protect as many of the green spaces within Congleton as we plan can in our plan. And no doubt, they will be challenged once we go out to consultation and the developers get hold of the draft plan and see what we're proposing.
Okay, have you finished that, Jackie?
Yeah, I haven't got any more hands or anything in chat.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Questions? Next up, it's Castle Margaret Garside. Margaret, over to you.
Uh, thank you, Chief Off- Chief Officer. Good evening, everyone. In September twenty nineteen, Congleton Town Council declared climate change emergency in response to global events. We pledged to make Congleton Town Council carbon neutral by twenty twenty five. From that date, all our actions have been evaluated to determine their impact on our carbon footprint and the environment. Our carbon foot footprint is a measure of the impact of our activities on the amount of carbon dioxide. Produced by burning fossil fuels to produce the energy required for the activity. This figure is important because carbon dioxide is one of the greenhouse gases that are building up in the atmosphere. And acting like a blanket or greenhouse, preventing heat leaving our planet. This then causes global warming and we now know that if global temperatures rise by more than two degrees centigrade. That the damage to our planet will be catastrophic and is likely to be irreversible. The council has formed a green working group to evaluate our carbon footprint and suggest ways it can be reduced. We have calculated the council carbon footprint for the last two years and we've already made some changes to reduce it. Next slide, please. Uh, we've switched to a green energy provider, we've removed plastic drinking cups. And we've reduced the amount of waste and increased recycling. One of the council's main assets is the town hall, so much of our work has been focused on how we can make the building more energy efficient. As a listed building, structural changes are likely to be difficult and costly. We've already changed all the lighting to low energy LED bulbs. And through a five year maintenance plan, hope to make further changes so the heating and insulation system is more energy efficient. Cheshire East Council already has a reduce reuse recycle policy which supports this area of our work. And this includes producing compost from green waste, some of which is already being used in some areas of the town. Next slide, please. Streetscape have revised their daily driving routes to reduce travelling time to a minimum. And when the current vehicle lease agreements end, we will be looking to use more environmentally friendly vehicles. The town planting programme now uses peat free compost. And summer bedding is gradually being replaced by more sustainable bedding where this is possible. Next slide, please. We are also looking at other less obvious areas of the council's work. For instance, our purchase of purchasing policy to try to reduce our environmental impact. Finally, the proportion of our activities which can't be reduced to zero will be balanced by a carbon offset programme. We are looking to work with Cheshire Wildlife Trust to restore a local moss area. These act as carbon sinks, absorbing carbon dioxide and operate for wildlife. Once there were many of these areas in Cheshire, but they have gradually been drained. You may be aware of Lindo Moss near Wilnslow, which is such a site and and still remains and is an S S S I. Trees for Congleton plans to plant thirty thousand trees in the Congleton area, one for each person in Congleton. These will absorb carbon dioxide as they grow and will help to cancel out the carbon dioxide that we produce. Planting started in the autumn of twenty nineteen in three areas of Congleton. And although it has been difficult during the Covid restrictions, further planting has taken place over this winter. With the help of the Cong- of the Cheshire Wildlife Trust. Planting will continue this coming autumn and hopefully will involve more local communities. Because they will be allowed to come out and help us with the planting. There are also plans for areas of wildflowers, which is part of our bio biodiversity. Next slide, please. Finally, looking forward, the council is producing an online course available free to all residents. To help us all evaluate our own carbon footprint and consider possible ways we can live a more sustainable lifestyle. Also, in the build up to COP twenty six in the UK, the Sustainability Group in Congleton are planning a green fair at the town hall in October. This will promote a wide range of ideas to support a more sustainable lifestyle. Thank you.
Okay, we have another quick poll coming up, so if people want to contribute to that, it comes up.
Sorry.
No pressure.
Seeing up on, oh yeah, people are responding. Okay, I'm thirty, thirty five, people have responded, so I haven't had anything for the last five seconds, I'm going to stop this one now.
Okay, interesting feedback, so. Fifty one percent saying we are doing enough to address the issue, eleven percent doing more than is necessary. Obviously, reasonable quantity of people don't think we're doing enough and the ones that don't know, so. Interesting feedback, so thank you for that, Margaret. Have you got any comments on that at all?
Um, I think that's very positive from our point of view as a green group. Um, we obviously want to do more over the next two or three years, but it's good to people feel we've made a good start.
Thank you. Right. Okay, so any questions for Margaret?
Okay, um. We've got the first question in from Paul Ems, do you want to answer, ask the question yourself or do you want it read out? Okay, question from Paul Ems is, what is? Uh, no mic, sorry.
Come on, Jackie.
Sorry.
Shall I read it?
What is Congleton Town Council doing to reduce our carbon footprint by helping residents to walk and cycle more?
Um, I think generally speaking, that role comes more under the remit of Cheshire East Council than the town council. And there are quite a lot of plans in place to actually increase the availability of cycle paths and walking paths. Um, this all takes time to do, um, so I don't think we'll see an instant result, but I think. Um, my understanding is the council is moving in the correct direction. Obviously, we as a town council will be pushing to have more paths and cycleways in the town. But it isn't within our remit to actually provide these ourselves.
Okay, the second question on the chat is from Lisa Miller and she has asked. Can councillors have more powers to protect established trees? I appreciate the tree planting group are doing a good job. But established trees need more protection.
Um, wherever possible, we do try and protect existing trees. For instance, if um trees are mentioned at all in, when they come to our planning committee. Um, we make every effort to stop any uh removal of trees and usually refer them to the CPO, the um, sorry, the tree tree protection.
we make every effort to stop any removal of trees and usually refer them to the CPO, the, sorry, the tree protection lady. Because obviously she will then check if the tree is safe, et cetera. But it is our policy, and I think it's actually written down somewhere, that we will as far as possible protect any existing trees that we are aware of.
And then we've got, we've got two hands up. First one is Olga. Have you got a question, Olga?
You're muted, Olga.
Yes, sorry. So the question is, Margaret, you mentioned the online Green Living course. Is it the course developed by Barry Fox, you mean? Is this the course? Is the course, you mentioned Green Living course, you said it would go online. Is this the course developed by Barry Fox?
It's based on the course produced by Barry, but it has been modified and updated, so it's suitable for e-learning rather than being delivered to a group of people.
Well, when you declared climate emergency in 2019, councillors were supposed to take this course. Has any councillors actually done this course?
Well, I've certainly done the course. I can't speak for anybody else.
I would like to see how many councillors did this course because it is very important for them to do this course.
I think, Olga, that the plan was that it would be taken, done in the town hall and presented to councillors, but then events were overtaken by Covid and lockdown and so on, which is why it has not been possible to arrange for a session in the town hall.
Okay, so our councillors committed to take this course.
That was, that was the policy, yes.
Yeah, so when can we check when they take this course? Yeah, I was saying, because since 2019, that's quite a long time. And we are ready to 2021. And if some councillors didn't take the course, it is detrimental to their decisions taken.
Well, the new course that we are writing should be available probably by May. And then one hopes that our councillors will give it a trial then and take the course.
Okay, thank you. This is another question I have got about gradually replacing bedding plants. In 2019, in Bloom Committee, Betty Pinter put the question in front of the Bloom Committee, are you going to have bedding plants or perennial plants? And the Bloom Committee voted for bedding plants. And of course, since that time, you declared climate emergency. What stops you to use bedding, to use perennial plants rather than bedding plants? Bedding plants are the plants you chuck away each year from, from, from the grounds.
I'm going to say something quickly, but then I'm going to hand over to David Brown to say a little bit more. But can I just say that quite a large proportion of the bedding plants that are used in the town are taken and recycled and used again. And certainly, if you go into the community garden at the moment, the perimillas that we've got there, which are looking magnificent, are all recycled from the ones that were in various places in the town. Not this winter that's just gone, but the winter before that. And the idea is that once again, this coming season, we will be taking some of those bedding plants and reusing them. So we are recycling and reusing a lot of the things that are being used and we will continue to do that. Now I'll pass over to David Brown, who's Chair of the In Bloom Committee.
Thank you very much, councillor Garside. I think he answers the question, question very, very well. The, a lot of the plants when, that were in, for example, in Mount Baton Way, eighty percent of those plants were recycled and are being reused and are being regrown now to plant up in the community for next year. So wherever possible, nothing is thrown away and we actually recycle that. And, and that's been the cornerstone really of part of the In Bloom operation that we've got, that we can give those plants and use them recycling to the In Bloom groups that, that sit in the neighborhoods and make that facility available to it. And certainly over the last four years, we've had a policy of introducing sustainable planting wherever it's appropriate.
And we've got one other question and that's from Richard. Richard, do you want to unmute yourself? You have?
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, well, it was a number of different councils have introduced like no-mow areas where they're basically letting the grassed areas go to wild to encourage all sorts of different wildlife and life. And does Congleton Town Council have any plans to encourage these or grow these areas around the town at all?
You want me to take this one? Or do you want to take it, Margaret?
Certainly, the no-mow May policy is already written into our plans and I think that's intended that Streetscape will pursue that. We also, as I mentioned, will be sowing wildflowers in some grassland areas. So they will not be cut at all during the summer months. It's a bit of a balance really, because we do get resistance from some of our residents who don't like to see the untidiness of uncut grass. And it's a matter of educating them. And I think like all the things we're doing within Bloom, it's changing things gradually. So what we would like becomes the norm rather than the exception. Is this the same Richard who asked the question about the screw?
No, that was Richard Wolf, I think.
Right, okay. Sorry, I hope that answers your question, Richard.
And Richard Wolf's question was, I don't think what you're currently undertaking are the wrong changes, but these changes only scratch the surface. We really need bigger projects like the recent Dane Hydro Screw, which produced a massive carbon footprint recovery. And so more of a statement, I think.
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, thank you Margaret and thank you residents for your questions there.
Okay.
Over to councillor Kay Wesley.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and everyone. And so I chair the Community and Environment Committee and that oversees several activities related to domestic and gender-based abuse and violence, which are dealt with by some working groups, the White Ribbon Group, the Health and Wellbeing Group and indeed the Anti-Social Behaviour Group. So just to talk a little bit about what we've been doing here, could we have the next slide please, Chief Officer? Thank you. So in Congleton, we have 250 families approximately affected by domestic violence every year, which is a similar rate to other towns. It's not so exceptional. And that means that we have an incidence of domestic violence reported to the police every day on average in our town and an incidence of sexual violence reported to the police each week on average. And so it's quite a lot of crime, but of course, these crimes by their very nature are behind closed doors. And, and the Covid crisis and the lockdown has seen visits to domestic abuse websites up by almost a thousand percent and calls to help lines by two-thirds. So this crisis has escalated as a result of the Covid lockdowns. And previously, our Congleton residents did have access to services, but they were remote, based in either Crewe or Macclesfield. And if you're someone that's stuck in lockdown and a victim of domestic abuse, it's pretty difficult to, you know, take your kids and get on the bus to Crewe or whatever to access face-to-face services. So we did have a challenge and we asked our local service provider, Chesh without Abuse, to come and tell us a bit more about that challenge and how we might resolve it. So next slide please. So what the council has done, we've done several things. We've created a White Ribbon Working Group, very ably chaired by councillor Robert Hemsley, who's here tonight. And that the purpose of the White Ribbon Campaign is to raise awareness and engage with the community, especially men and boys actually, in speaking out against violence and abuse. So to change some of the behaviours that can lead to violence and abuse. Now, our White Ribbon objective is to eradicate all gender-based violence and abuse in Congleton, recognizing males can be victims too. And you can see some of the things we've been doing on the, on the pictures there. We've been working with Chesh without Abuse, who are the service provider here, and the police as well. The police have been great partners in this to get funding for a weekly domestic abuse clinic in Congleton, which has been going on in the old Sawmill since September. And it's been a bit of a blend of face-to-face clinic and of course, online clinic because of lockdowns. But nonetheless, it has been going every week for the last six months or so. Next slide please. So our progress so far, we've achieved White Ribbon accreditation, which means that we are a town which is aiming to stamp out gender-based violence and abuse, which is fantastic. We marked White Ribbon Day, which was November the 25th around the town. You might have seen the white ribbons donated by the wonderful Beresfords, tied around all our lump posts in our town hall and we flew the white ribbon flag. And hundreds of our residents have come to our tables in the town centre and made their White Ribbon promise to help to eradicate abuse and violence, which is fantastic. And a great many residents have actually come up and said to us, thank you. This has happened to me and I'm so glad the council is talking about this and bringing this out into the open. The clinic too has done very well. It so far supported 283 survivors in the first six months. And it keeps case notes for all of those people. And there's evidence of real, real serious harm being prevented as a result of having this service in Congleton Town. We've recently gone online, created a Facebook group, White Ribbon Congleton. We have had White Ribbon stuff on our Congleton Town Council Facebook and website, of course, but we've now gone online so that people who want to participate and volunteer can volunteer online by joining that group and talk to each, you know, talk to peers about what we can do about this issue. So please do join if you are interested.
Okay.
Are there any questions on that? Thank you.
Okay.
I don't think any questions have come in on the chats. I don't know.
Nothing on the chat, nothing on the participants.
Sweet then.
Thank you councillor Wesley.
Thank you.
Okay, that's myself now to talk about the Covid recovery plan and basically take you through where we're at with it. And the starting point is a massive thank you to lots of residents across Congleton who have supported not only ourselves and what we're doing, but each other. I think it's something that as a town and as a town council, we're enormously proud of the response of everybody in Congleton on this. So it's a thank you to the neighbours who supported neighbours, those who shopped, listened, picked up prescriptions, those who fundraised, donated and helped, those who made personal sacrifices, to the children who learned to learn from home, to the businesses who adapted to keep serving and to the key workers who kept on going. Whatever role you played, the town council would like to thank you. In terms of supporting the community, from a vaccination perspective, the town hall, as many will know, is a vaccination centre and it will be at least till the end of July. So in the first three months, almost 13,000 people received the first vaccination and further 250,000 have their second vaccination. It's worth noting that there was a team of 90 volunteer helpers who helped coordinate through the road treat, supporting the NHS team. Such a fantastic effort. We're also undertaking lateral flow tests for volunteers and frontline council staff who were tested in the town hall. Please to say so far all have been negative. And other activity we've been involved in is supporting the big heart lunch and club. Staff have changed roles as when needed to support the community during the lockdown periods. And we still continue to support the delivery of meals prepared by the old Sawmill to around 70 people every Friday. And we've done that since last May and it's proved a valuable way of support, not just from the food aspect, receiving the meal, but also the interaction of people who are delivering them and having a smiley face there. And we've had a community support line, which is a dedicated phone line that was set up in April 2020 and it still continues to connect local people who need volunteer help. So it's been a fantastic effort by all those involved. So it's what are we doing next in terms of Covid? And one of the main areas is supporting the town centre. Many town centres as well, all town centres across the UK have had a massive hit. So we've got to try and help pull our town centre through this most difficult time. So in ways of finding different ways to support the businesses, supporting the community as well as the residents, we've got to keep you all informed of whatever opportunities that are out there, you know, through the Covid support mechanism, will just guidance on what you can and can't do. Also remembering those that we've suffered loss during this very, very difficult period. What we'd like to do is at some point celebrate our local heroes, of which there are many. It's a very quick presentation because we want to move through three things and we're all aware of Covid, but happy to take any questions that any residents have or any thoughts they may have as well. On behalf of the town as a whole, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the staff and the town hall who worked incredibly hard during this period and done a splendid job. So from the Deputy Mayor of the town, please accept this as a thank you. Thank you very much councillor Murphy. Thank you very much. Okay, no questions then?
No, oh, no. It's got some thumbs up but not hands up.
Okay, right, we'll, we'll move on then. Okay, sorry, we're going on to submitted questions now. So we've now got eight questions that were submitted in advance and we'll be going through them in the order they were raised. Where there's an asterisk against the name, they've indicated they would like the question to be read on their behalf and the questions will appear on screen. Answers will be given by the chairs of the relevant committee or officers. Okay. So the first question, which I'll read out, which is from Maurice Walker. Could the town council assure the general public that the new road system for traffic using Rude Hill is going to put road safety first? From Mount Baton Way, the traffic will double in volume because of the closure of Mill Street and there being no crossing on Rude Hill, schoolchildren and pedestrians in general will take their life in their hands to get across this busy thoroughfare. Will the local council apply pressure on Cheshire East to secure a crossing before there is a serious accident? And councillor Brown answering to that?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Chief Officer. We've recently been told by Cheshire East Council that there will not be, not be, I emphasise, a new traffic system put into place for Congleton following the recent tranche two active travel consultation. Traffic will continue to have an option of using Mill Street, meaning there will be no, should be no additional volume of traffic on Rude Hill. However, a crossing on Rude Hill has been recognised by Congleton Town Council and various other crossing points within our town. And as it's important and an important part of our policy to encourage safe walking and cycling routes, we will continue to lobby for extra crossing places.
Okay, thank you David. Question two from Len Bright. With regards to the proposed active travel plans being proposed for Congleton, I'd like to know, A, why is it being proposed? B, how much will it cost? And C, would it not be better to postpone until the new link road effects on traffic are bedded in? Councillor Brown?
Yeah, I think, I think Cheshire East must have known this question were coming. Yesterday, we were told by Cheshire East Council that they will not be taking any tranche to active travel measures forward for Congleton. Cheshire East Council was, Cheshire, sorry, Congleton Town Council was consulted on a number of proposals to use £588,000 of the active travel funding earmarked by Cheshire East by the Department of Transport. The timing of the consultation was determined by the requirement for Cheshire East Council to confirm its intended use of the funds by the end of the last financial year, 31st of March 2021. There was a clear majority against these proposals in Congleton and so Cheshire East Council does not intend to take any of these projects forward. Instead, active travel funding will be used on schemes in Wimslow and Macclesfield, which received widespread support. Cheshire East has promised that further work will be carried out with the local community and the town council to identify alternative measures that can lock in the traffic reduction benefits of the new Congleton relief road. This provides an opportunity to revisit assessment of traffic flows across the town and they predict that traffic flows on Congleton bypass should reduce by about 7,000 a day. and they predict that traffic flows on Congleton bypass should reduce by about 7,000 a day. Currently, the road sees around 13,000 journeys a day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question three from Maurice Walker. In the light of the council being underspent by £150,000 and a bank balance of approximately £700,000, can the council explain how it can justify the increase in council tax for the residents in Congleton? Surely in the time of deep insecurity and shortage of money, it would have been a great suggestion to waive the increase this year. The councillor, Robert Douglas, respond to that?
Yes, thank you, Maurice, for the question. It's not legally possible to alter the precept for the forthcoming year. The town council's budget has to be drawn up in November for the following April. And therefore, at the time the budget's drawn up, any underspend or overspend is difficult to predict so far in advance. We must also bear in mind that increases in our most significant cost, labour, is outside our control. That increase depends on the outcome of national wage negotiations between public sector unions and the government. At the time this year's budget was generated, RFO consulted widely with many other RFOs and the significant majority budgeted an increase in labour costs of 2%, which is exactly what we budgeted. That budgeted increase in our labour costs accounted for 56% of the increase in this year's precept. I would like to thank Ruth Burgess and Mark Worington for carrying out major exercises on future capital expenditure plans over the next five years regarding streetscape equipment and repairs and refurbishments in the town hall. The exercise in the town hall is not yet complete, but with our grade two listed building, it is already clear that our capital contingency fund of just over £300,000 is far too low to cover major refurbishments that will be required over the next five years. Therefore, the majority of this year's underspend of £150,000 will be set aside to reduce the shortfall in our capital contingency fund. We as a council appreciate it's important for our residents not to see significant increases in the precept from year to year. By careful and detailed budgeting and with our council ensuring that sufficient reserves are set aside, residents may rest assured that unless something quite exceptional and unforeseen occurs, they should only at worst be seeing very modest increases in our precept in the future.
Thank you, Councilman Douglas. Okay, question four is from Andrew Coates Stig. What does the town council consider to be the most important this time, considering the last 12 months that we've had to endure due to the pandemic? A, planning for a statue or B, the mental health of our community, those who may be in poverty due to the pandemic and the elderly who've been in isolation for a long time? And do all councils create a display or just some? So councillor Turkey is responding to this.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief Officer, and thank you very much, Andrew, for your question. So the town council, along with other groups and organisations in Congleton, has been working really hard to protect residents and businesses through what has been an incredibly difficult year and we will continue to do so. And much of this work is behind the scenes and never publicised. The council also has a health and wellbeing working group whose main focus is mental health and we run the Covid Community Leads Group that has worked tirelessly to ensure that those struggling due to isolation, mental health or poverty are supported. Behind the scenes councillors and council officers support or run luncheon club meal delivery, free school meal delivery, have hosted a food bank, assembled Congleton Cares goodie bags, coordinated volunteers, telephone helpline operators and provided an online Covid advice portal and many more initiatives too numerous to mention. However, it's also great that Congleton has passionate groups and organisations that have been driven to bring new and exciting opportunities to our town. Elizabeth Group was formed in March 2018 with the ambition to raise the profile of an amazing woman who lived for most of her life in Congleton and has been given national recognition for the work she carried out to improve the lives and opportunities for women. This group has raised over £40,000 and are planning to gift the statue, ultimately create, to the town. The group is a charity and independent of the town council. So the town council is involved in some great work on mental health and isolation, but that doesn't mean that all other work should stop. And if there is an opportunity to attract more people into the town, which will help our businesses, it doesn't need to be a choice between one or the other. Both are possible.
Question five, again from Andrew Coates Stig. When the time is right, due to the pandemic problems, has or will the council be considering the potential for extra donations for our museum by putting the statue there? Or the possibility of the entrance inside the town hall where it would be safer to situate and increase potential visitors to the town hall?
Okay, thank you, Andrew. You get me again, I'm afraid. And so we're currently considering the best location for the statue, which, as I've said, Elizabeth Group intends to give to the town as a gift. And this will go to a future council meeting, so do check out the agendas and come along if that's of interest to you. It's a public piece of art and that it's designed to be displayed outside rather than located inside a building. However, you know, all suggestions should be considered. And as I'm sure you're aware, the town hall is already a well-used multipurpose venue with three doors leading off the entrance foyer. Locating a statue inside the town hall would not work for us for a number of logistical reasons. And for example, we've recently had a fire and safety audit, which has required us to invest in an improvement to our access and emergency evacuation in what is already a complex heritage building. And other items such as the exciting development for the town that when the visitor information centre reopens and when it's allowed to, it will actually be under the management of the town council, not Cheshire East. And it will be redeveloped to improve its layout and function and hopefully we'll see increased visitors numbers. And we may yet have to step in and look at the town hall as a host for a post office if all other avenues of discussion do not deliver the required outcome. And so for all of these combined reasons, we need the foyer to be as clear as possible, I'm afraid. With regard to the museum, the town council is committed to supporting the museum and gives the museum free use of the space that it occupies within the town hall building. The museum has received generous Covid support funding during the pandemic and it's in really good shape to reopen when restrictions allow. Expansion of the key issue of the museum is a key strategic issue for the museum trustees, of which I am one. And this may involve relocation or reconfiguration and all options will be explored. Anyone wishing to support the gem that is Congleton Museum can do so by becoming a friend of Congleton Museum for a modest contribution via their website. So do check that out. So thanks for your questions, Andrew.
Question six, which is from Gary Dolman. And question A, what is the legal status of the travellers breaking locks and parking on land illegally? And where and why are they not arrested for trespass? B, why are they not arrested for breaking and entering, so criminal damage? If I broke the padlock and cancelled on Hankinson's Field, I'll soon be paying a visit to the British Police custody. C, finally, who deals with such trespass? Congleton Town Council or Cheshire East? I tweeted Cheshire East last Thursday about the travellers' arrival. Why can't they be served a notice to move earlier? We're getting fed up of the mess they leave and wonder why it takes so long to evict them. That's councillor Wesley responding to that one.
Yes, thank you, Chief Officer, and thank you very much for the question, Gary. I'm sure that many people might have wanted to ask this question and many people share your frustrations. And we sought answers to this question from the police and from the Cheshire and Warrington traveller team who are responsible for this issue. First of all, if there's any evidence of anyone breaking locks, they can be charged with a criminal offence. However, there must be evidence either in form of a CCTV or eyewitness testimony for this. Currently, trespass is only a civil offence in England. In UK law, trespass is not a criminal offence and as such, it's the responsibility of the landowner to remove the encampment. Currently, there is guidance from the government telling councils they must carry out welfare assessments on families arriving on encampments on public land. Private landowners do not have to adhere to this. In the first instance, the Cheshire and Warrington Traveller Team, CWTT, must assess whether there's a legitimate reason for a group to be encamped at a particular location, for example, for access to medical care. If there are no mitigating circumstances, the group are issued a 24 hours notice to leave it, which is called a section 77 notice. Once this notice is served, the land is protected from the same families returning there for three months. If they fail to adhere to the time and date on the section 77 notice, they are committing an offence. And at this point, the matters refer to the relevant council's legal team to request a court hearing. Anyone breaking and entering or causing criminal damage can be arrested if there's evidence in the form of CCTV or eyewitness testimony, which needs to be able to identify the individuals responsible. Now, unauthorised encampments are managed by the Cheshire and Warrington Traveller Team and the team is made up of five officers who cover the whole of the Cheshire and Warrington area. The team doesn't provide hours coverage and as this was a long bank holiday weekend, they were unable to pick it up until Tuesday. In the last year, there have been four unauthorised encampments on local authority-owned sites in Congleton. Of these, two were a family group who moved from the leisure centre to Antrim Street during March. On both these occasions, the groups were visited and served notice within 24 hours of their arrival. The most recent group arrived on Thursday, the 1st of April and members of CWTT were unable to attend over the Easter weekend. They did at the earliest opportunity on the morning of Tuesday, the 6th. The total clean-up cost of these encampments has been £632 and this doesn't include the current encampment at Hankinson's Field as clean-up's only undertaken once the group has left the location. We will put a link to the Cheshire and Warrington Travellers Team onto the town council website so that you can see more of the legal processes and arrangements surrounding travellers. And I hope that answers your question, Gary. Thank you.
Thank you, Wesley. Question seven from Olga Whitmore. Olga, are you wanting to raise this question yourself or do you want me to read it now?
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. In total, how much money, because I live at Bromley Farm, I would like to ask this question because nobody can answer it. In total, how much money and other funding has Congleton Town Council provided to Bromley Farm Community Trust since 2016? Has Congleton Town Council been provided with the financial details accounts? And has Congleton Town Council, same Bromley Farm Community Trust constitution? And this Congleton Town Council have all the appropriate information about the trust as they should have had before granting any money?
Council Douglas, one answer this question, Olga. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Olga, for the question. Congleton Town Council has given three grants to Bromley Farm Community Trust since 2016. One for £380 in March 2016, one for £380 in March 2018 and again one for another £380 in March 2019. Each grant was for an edition of the Bromley Farm Quarterly Newsletter. Sending a copy of the constitution and accounts are not a prerequisite of the town council grants and funding policy. The grants and funding policy was amended on the 12th of September 2019 and clause nine reads as follows. The council will normally require details of the structure and funding of the organisation and may request copies of the budget or accounts and business plans for applications over £250. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, next question is from Pippa Jeffrey. It said, we have only two allotment sites in Congleton, both with very long waiting lists, which have been on for a long time now. I speak with friends who live in neighbouring towns such as Nantwich, Winsford and Alsager. It has become clear that their councils are providing their towns with enough allotment space for the need of their population as they don't have to join waiting lists and are able to take on plots straight away. It's one of the highest paying council tax areas in Cheshire East. We should not be having this problem. I'd like to ask companies and town councils what they are doing, what they are going to do about this and when they are going to provide the community of Congleton with more space for allotments, especially with the ever increasing population size and with all the new building, housing sites popping up on every available field surrounding the town. Okay. Who's going to be answering this one? Is it Andrew Thompson? It's gone quiet.
Councillor Gartside, Chief Officer.
Sorry.
Councillor Gartside.
Councillor Gartside, sorry, Councillor Gartside. I didn't touch on this, I'll just.
It wasn't to where I was answering this. Sorry.
Sorry, that was the.
Well, go on, Jackie.
I was going to say that that was sent through quite late to Councillor Gartside. So sorry, sorry about that. And Andrew Thompson did send us some information, but he's had to leave the meeting. And so the response was based around the fact that this is a complicated area and it is an area that we can look into both on the neighbourhood plan side and as a town council. As a town council, we are looking at the green infrastructure around Congleton anyway and we will pick up this and have to do a bit of a review. It is, it's not, it's not completely straightforward and the laws around it are quite complicated and a lot of the issues is around actually getting the land for allotments. And so it is something we'll have to look into and report into a future community environment committee and report back to Pippa Jeffrey on.
Okay. Thank you. Right. Okay, that's the end of the questions presented by residents direct to the council. So this is a forum now for residents to raise any other questions they wish to.
If I can just say, just as we were going through the other questions, Richard Wharf raised a question in the chat, which I said I would bring up when we got into the general time. And this was following the Gary Dolman's question on the travellers and he remarked that it is interesting as Hankinson's Field belongs to the people, although some suggest Cheshire East Council now own the land and has asked details about who is actually the landlord of Hankinson's Field. And not something I know the answer to. I don't know if anyone else in the room knows.
I don't from my position, but it's something we can certainly pick up and check. I think the general belief is in the ownership of the people of Congleton that somebody has to be accountable for it. And I think that would be Cheshire East Council, but we can verify that. Okay.
Okay.
Any more questions? No, Councillor?
Correct, David.
All right, Councillor.
Yeah, that's correct. It is a legal responsibility of Cheshire East, but they actually gifted it over to the people of Congleton for use, but they have the title right to the land.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so at the moment.
There's one through on chat, I think, Jackie.
Has my chat stopped?
Your chat never stops.
Let me.
One from Susan Mead.
Can I read it?
Right.
Who's reading it? John to do it, Kate?
Why haven't the council addressed the lack of the AGM and the problems at Bromley Farm Community Trust? Concerns have been raised on social media, newspaper, et cetera. Please can we as residents be given the opportunity to be part of the decisions made about their area? Actually, I think it's a good thing I read it, Chief Officer, because I think you know a little bit about what's happening with regard to the, at least the timetable of what's happening there.
Yeah, it's just make it clear that the asset is owned by Cheshire East Council and the contracts that are there to support it, or the grants, do come from Cheshire East Council. We've become increasingly aware of this over the last few months and ward councillors will be briefed by Cheshire East Council. They've undertook the review of the services provided there, how it's run, et cetera, which were the main concerns and the AGM was obviously one of those that's well-known concern. So basically, Cheshire East. So basically, Cheshire East Council will or are in mid-process and hopes to be finished by the end of May, if my recollection is correct, councillor Wesley, the dates. Hope to be finished by the end of May where they will be coming back to the community trust via the ward members to present their findings. So it's not something we have jurisdiction over, but we have worked to trample Cheshire East into the resolution for this particular issue, which they are undertaking at the moment. Okay, has any of the relevant councils got anything else to add to that? No?
I think, I think the, I think the process you've set up and the way that Cheshire East to deal with it and again to report back to the three local Cheshire East councillors and whether, whether any revisions to the operation or not will be decided following the outcome of their jurisdiction.
Okay.
I think it's worth saying that town councillors have heard what residents have said and have passed on the comments of residents. We haven't, we are not ignorant about it and as the chief officer said, it's not our responsibility or ability to resolve things, but we're glad that Cheshire East officers are now looking into it.
Okay. Anybody got any, any other questions or want to make any other comments on anything? I think that's the end. The end, that's right. Well, on behalf of the town council, can I thank all those residents and members of the town council who attended this evening? It is a town meeting. It's very important that the community has the opportunity to express opinions and ask questions of the town council. This is not exclusively the only way of doing it. You can always come into the town council and contact town councillors. So once again, thank you all for attending this evening. And we finished just four minutes after the town clock has said we should finish. So once again, thank you for attending and good night.